Please join me in the presence of the flag.
United States, to the flag, from the United States, and to the Republicans who wish to dance one nation, into this whole liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is the Rochester Town Council meeting, 2020. The forum here, Jeff, Randy. We're so worried about that. Okay, back on track here. We have a forum. Snagged up there? That there's him?
Yep.
Okay, so where everybody's here. Approve the current agenda.
I would so move.
I'll second.
The move by Jeff, second by Jessica, to approve the agenda. Any more comments? Home favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Approve the minutes of the prior council meeting for April 21st.
Also move.
Randy's move?
I'll second.
Jessica's second it. Home favor?
Aye.
And I see that we have our guest Carrie from the Sherwood County Conservation District. Got there Carrie?
I am. How are you? Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
You for virtually.
Yeah, right. It's been kind of, I just, we just had our board meeting the same way here a few minutes ago and it's a, it's a different kind of way of communicating with people, that's for sure.
Okay, well, well, thank you for coming. So we appreciate what you do and I'll let you go ahead and give your presentation.
Well, I won't go through too much just because of the, the way we are. I did send and I assume you have the copy of the, um, the report of the, how we allocated funding over the previous year. We do appreciate, I know I've said this a number of times, but the support from the town of Rochester, as you know, a lot of our funding comes from state and federal and even private, more so, grants these days, but all of those sources require some level of match and the funds we receive from the town and the other municipalities in the county are very helpful for us to do that. This year, our budget as of, our expenditures as of March 31st are, are nearly $800,000 and that is quite a bit elevated this year because of the large stream project we did on the Tongue River there near the town of Dayton this year. We're usually more around the $300,000 range. This past year, as you know, we, we really tried and ensure that we spend all of the funds from the towns of Dayton and Rochester within the Tongue River watershed. We know that's your demographic and we try to be respectful of that. With that, I guess I'll just answer any questions or any comments that you guys might have and let you get to the rest of your virtual meeting, although you guys, you have a few of you in the same room.
Yeah, but we're socially apart.
Socially apart.
How did that project go in Dayton, Carrie?
You know, Jeff, we were really happy with it. Um, it was one of the rare times when we have a project of that size that comes in under budget and on time. So we were really excited about that. All told, the total project was about $520,000 and we had a combination of, we had some federal grants and USDA funds. We had several state grants, including some from Department of Ag, Game and Fish and Wyoming Wildlife and Natural Resources. We had some funds from the town of Dayton there and, and other government sources and then some private donations and then the nature constituency also contributed some funding. So we were really happy with it. Of course, you know, with high water this year, there could be some adjustments with settling and we're going to watch it this first year just to kind of see what, see how it holds up, I guess. There's no guarantee, as you probably know with projects like this.
Oh yeah, water's a never-ending battle. Well, thank you, Carrie. Appreciate everything that you and the Conservation District do and I know you're dedicated to our values, so appreciate it.
I, I don't have any other questions. I do appreciate it, Carrie, for, yeah, for keeping us in your programs and stuff like that because we can always use the, use the help out here with, you know, with the creeks and rivers and stuff. So really do appreciate that.
Well, we appreciate your guys' support and not just the funding support, but the other partnership support that we've had with you guys over the years.
Yeah, so any other questions for Carrie? No, I really appreciate it. It's, it's always great to, what we do to support a group to have somebody come back and give us that personal presentation and, and take the effort to give us the information and, yeah.
Well, and I feel like it's the least I can do. I, I really don't like funds to come in and go into the vacuum. I really think it's important for all of you guys to know how we're using your funds.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Carrie.
Well, thank you. I'm probably not going to stay on now, um, just because it's a little awkward here sitting in my rocking chair in the bedroom, but. Enjoy the rest of your meeting and hopefully we'll be back again in person one of these days soon.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try, we'll keep you in mind. We don't, we're working on our budget now and certainly that's, that's a part of it and, but we don't know what's going to happen in the next,
Sure.
Next, next fiscal year for us, so it's.
Yeah, no, I understand. I, I certainly understand, so.
Hey, Carrie, I, I just have one question. Is, is your funding, is it substantial or enough to, you know, to see you through? Is, do you need increases? What?
Um, no, I, I hesitate especially a year like this to ask for increases. Of course, we could always take that because the grant funding, as you know, is, is sometimes a little less dependable. We are operating on a, on a four-year grant right now. So I don't expect that funding. It's already committed. Um, so I think we're okay for the next couple of years anyway, that way, but you know, it's always, when you're working with soft money like this, it's always just hard. And that's part of what I try to do is just try to find as many sources as I can, which is why that Dayton project was so, took so long for one thing, but then also why it came together so well is because we had so many different partners, but it is a little bit like herding cats at times when you're trying to grab all the pieces and, and make them work together because each, each grant or funding source, of course, has its own strings or attachments.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Old business, I don't really have any new business. Water use agreement for 1104 railway. I think you got the email that Dennis Dunn, who was hiding out back here.
In the corner.
In the corner.
Ten feet away.
Ten feet away. Has requested the change in his, in his water use agreement with the town of Rochester. Originally did not allow for irrigation, just for domestic use, but also landscaping or irrigation outside the house. He's requesting to, I believe, put in a sprinkler system. I did look at it for about 3,000 square feet, which is a small yard.
Small green space.
Yeah, it's, it's a small green space for his, his lawn to be, so basically just to be an amendment because we don't, don't allow it right now. So we have to redo the agreement to allow in this particular case for outside irrigation. Somewhat limited.
If I could add something to it.
Kimber, Kimber, you want to just speak out or you to speak out just a little bit?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. So basically, just to floor your about three thousand, you come up, I asked Mayor Chris to go again. You know, you're looking at 10 gallons per minute, 15 minutes, three times, you're looking at 540, 600 gallons a week probably maximum. Still going to get the irrigation system up, you know, just to have as a residual. I know that water is going to be beneficial to my lawn anyway. But there's times, you know, that just beneficial to have, you know, to turn on a spigot for 15 minutes, a couple of times a week or something like that. I got two acres, I irrigate two acres. I don't want to irrigate two acres, I'm above two acres, but I'm going to just do a small six or yards, about 3,000 square feet. I am going to continue to work on my irrigation system to supplement it. You know, we get into months like July, August, stuff like that, you know, and you guys get a little bit taxed at times for water. I know our minimum is probably wouldn't be that still, you know, by what we're going to end up using. So it's not like I'm saying, hey, this is all nothing for me. I, I need or I can't survive because I'm going to continue to use the water out of our ditch, but we're just trying to put up the system to figure out how to get that to work effectively. And I'm not there yet. It's going to take a little bit of time. I travel a lot, I travel a lot. Be nice to know when I have a safe device, right? Just set a timer, 15 minutes on Tuesday, Thursday, and I don't have a welder to worry about, you know, trying to pump out a, an irrigation system, something like that. So that's kind of the, the nuts and bolts of it. So, questions?
Well, you're on a meter.
Pardon? Yeah, I'm on a meter.
So it's going to be metered and you're going to pay for it?
Absolutely. Yeah.
I don't, I don't see.
Yeah, I don't see a problem. Yeah, I mean, we're, you know, we know what we're doing as far as, you know, minimal, going to water it on a heated dam. I mean, we've done it. We love to have this room. So it's just, if it's something that can get done, possibility to make some kind of adjustment to it, I sure appreciate it. Any questions I'm trying to answer? And feel free to come over and look at it as well, you know, see what we do now.
I don't see any issue with it other than, of course, it's metered. I would like to bound it so that it's confined to the acreage that you're talking about and it can't go beyond that without you having to come back and ask.
And you know what, Chris, you, the mayor can come see what we have and we put in, we put a system in, you can see exactly what I will do. Yeah, you know, it's not like it's trying to get a two-acre area. It's literally going to be confined to a small backyard and.
Is 3,000 square feet accurate?
I know, I measured it today. My wife's moving around the berms. If you say they don't have the berms in or anything like that, I won't happen to have any, like, come up and measure with me, think about it.
So I guess I'd put a motion on the floor to amend the agreement for 1104 railway. And authorize the mayor to draft an agreement to give us approval that would bound the area.
So what we're trying to do right now is we have a perimeter, what's going to be, the entire backyard is 50 feet, 50 feet by 66 or something like that. But that's not going to be the whole grass area. We're going to have a berm that kind of works anywhere between two and a half to six foot around corners. So that space is literally going to be just shrunk down into the.
So it would be, for state margins, less than 4,000 square feet?
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So.
So let's amend the agreement to be not more than, irrigate more than 4,000 square feet.
So it's been moved to amend the water use agreement with Dennis Dunn, 1104 railway to irrigate not more than 4,000 square feet.
Okay.
Well, second. Second by Randy in your discussion. Any consideration of any, this is outside the city limits, any excess charges? We have the right to do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, you know, as a. I mean, it's just, I don't know.
I haven't thought about it. I, I think I'm okay with their grant rates being applied.
Okay.
It's a 20% for that new HOA, the water rate.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's 20% for the HOA, GR branch.
Which is a couple of dollars.
And it's, it's a group of all, just not as single.
Well, for each bill, it's an extra 20%.
For year reading.
It's just 20, instead of being 26, it's $28, FYI.
Which is completely fair and understandable. I would not object to that whatsoever. The benefit, the, the benefit of me would be great because if I'm gone for a month, knowing that I do the irrigation line and I will have it turned on and I'll be utilizing, but if I had a staff who would be able to go and push a button.
Well, if you're not opposed and it's in line with what we've done with the HOA.
I think in long, a long term, it might be for us to start booking agreements outside the city limits that, yeah, do have a little extra charge because of that. They're not, they don't directly contribute to property taxes to the town, you know, so they're not annexed in, so it's just a, it's a premium charge for convenience for having to save water.
And I think, I think that's the way I would do it as well personally. So.
What was the percentage again?
20%.
So I would move to amend the motion to include a 20%.
It's a second of the amendment. Since the motion has been amended by Jessica, so we vote on the amendment first. So any more discussion on the amended portion of the motion? All in favor of the amendment motion?
Aye.
Now for the original motion with, now it attaches an amendment to it. So all in favor or any more discussion on the original motion? So it's home favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I'll draft up an agreement with, to amend the, the water use agreement with Dennis Dunn and 1104 railway to not more than 4,000 square feet and 24, 20% additional charge for the rate.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Not just today, I have dinner.
Nobody likes us.
Good seeing everybody though.
Okay, moving right along, we have a resolution 01-2020, the rates of fee schedule. If you had a chance to review it, it basically moves all of our rates and fees out of our ordinances into a resolution so we don't have to go through the process of rewriting all of ordinances and doing three arrangements. So it's all reference to a resolution for all of our, our fee schedules. We added everything we could think of, but the kitchen sink, everything that we know of that was seen there as a, a fee, part of the schedules. All these things that come up periodically.
I like it.
It's just more flexible for us as far as administrative.
And the big thing is that the utilities will not become effective until July 1st because we need to give everyone this time to know that there'll be an increase, which it only will increase it to $65 for a full minimum bill. It'll be 65 instead of.
61, 60 or something like that, right?
Yeah, so we rounded everything up and.
And the, these are all things we've been, what we've been working on, you know, trying to make sure that enterprise accounts, the water, sewer, garbage are, are at least break even.
Yep.
They're not substantial increases, but it just goes into a form that may, it's easier for us to, to manipulate, so. Resolution, whereas the town of Rochester has established a scheduled fees and rates for all permits and licenses that are required for the service of town, provided by the town. And I'm not going to read them all because it's pretty complicated. And whereas all rates will be effective on a date signed with the exception of the utility rates for water sewer and sanitation fees, which will be effective July 1st, 2024, 2020. Now therefore be resolved that the town of Rochester councils hereby establishes this schedule rates and fees. There are other fees and rates that are established by the resolution or town policies. This resolution shall remain back until it is amended. So I entertain a motion to approve resolution 01-2020, also move. Randy moves? And seconded by Jessica. Any more discussion? Any more discussion?
I'd like to offer a random.
Okay, any more discussion for all favor of resolution 01-2020?
Aye.
Aye. Passes you now, say, okay, we'll get that out there. Mayor's report. I have been asked by the county, county commissioners to ask a member of our town council to be on the committee to do basically the outreach for the cap tax, to review the outreach for the cap tax.
I can do that.
You really can do that?
Yeah, I'm willing to do that. Sam, unless you want to do it?
No.
I will inform them. So Jeffrey volunteered for that, so I'll, I'll send it to Renee. It's one of the things they're putting those, those stuff in or something. Like, they did have a phone-in cap, cap tax meeting. We originally asked for 225,000, 225.
250,000.
250,000, 250 million dollars, so 22.5. I got my digits off here. Anyway, we're down to 1,920,000. That's, that's going to be what they would recommend you be used, which we can adjust our, our schedule. We were just doing an estimation on that.
We went up. We threw it high to go low.
Yeah, we threw it high to go low. So 1,920,000 is what they're, they're, they will, will be getting from the cap taxes, a $49 cap. So that's ours. It's a little bit more to put our percentages because the bigger, the county and the city are, are letting smaller towns get my money, so.
How generous.
Yeah, it was. I asked my, I learned using our most recent census and they said they gave us the other stuff, so. But I think we can live within that since we don't know what's going to happen in the next several years anyway, and most of our stuff is the estimation. We have set up a sandbagging station behind the town hall again. Just in case, and I think we put some, we put deposits of sand down on the end of Fourth Avenue West because the landlord there is the one that uses most of sandbags when we're here because it gets flooded every year. So just more convenient. So anybody down that end, full, full sand down there. Okay. All right, I went to a closing for the property 157 Gillette Street. So that's sun sealed and done. I'll get our checks for that. And I didn't know this, but it's a Quirk Treasures Appreciation Week and I, I don't know how. I really appreciate my Quirk Treasure. That's a lot for the town, you know, you're not in there every day fielding questions and answering things and stuff and I really do appreciate Barbara and Kathy too for, for doing the, for the towns. It's a lot of work, a lot of moving parts up there, so.
Mike, could you get a cart for yourself on our behalf?
Well, he knew there wasn't phone, so my check. Well, we won't discuss it now.
Yeah, really, it's, it's really been, the last couple of weeks, this last couple of weeks have been really, really interesting, so it's been, it's been a challenge for us. And the only other thing I have is the 20 cents is be sure to get out there and participate. We, I think I saw a thing for the state law, I mean, get for every dollar we we put into the, the federal government, we get $2,000 back per person or something like that. So we're amazing, it's an amazing return. I couldn't, couldn't pull it up again, but as of yesterday, Rochester is at 18.1% response rate, self-response, so they brought it, so it's a little bit, Dayton's only at 13.3, I just have to push that up. So, you know, keep, keep doing the, the census. That's important to us for months. I don't have anything else. Report on projects. We rescheduled the spring construction on Gillette for August. We've changed up a little things due to manpower considerations and that stuff, so we will, we're going to, it'll probably work out better for the town crew and stuff. Until we get through how our, our staffing is going to work and what we're going to do on that project. We've got most of the stuff in place. We've realigned all the vendors. Everybody got a hold of it, so.
Is that toward the 1st of August?
We're, we're working on a date on that. We're going to work out best. Do you have any, any input on that?
Well, I don't.
We're just trying to figure out a date now, the 7th of August. Probably, I think, maybe earlier August, but it may be pushed back. Had a planning commission meeting last night for the preliminary plat. Or stone mill constructions in the second phase. Stone Ridge. So you have, you have a minute, meeting notes on this. They'll come up with their, on May 19th, May 19th for the plat. You know, so if you have any concern about, I think you've got all the information on the plats and if the council has any more input on that, certainly speak up, get on the plat. The joint powers. I think that's all I have for projects. We're almost done with the back, back part here, with signings up. The restrooms, we're looking, we're still looking at security cameras before we get on that. We've got another, we talked to another company this week, giving some bit on security cameras. Is that local?
Very good.
Yeah, we're trying. Do you have any, nothing else out there? It's the special committee reports. The joint, the next joint powers board meeting is May 21st. Don't really have anything to say. There are already starting to mark, mark the town Dayton and then getting a lot more interest in the downtown gas. Putting together those thoughts. If you're interested. Yes, Sam?
Um, Jessica is posting updates on the Tongue River Happenings page as well, so where the construction is and the flagging, so everybody can tune in there for her update.
Yeah, that's Jessica with WWC. So it'd be on that, it's on ads and it's on our website and there's going to be an internet, a map showing where the construction is progressing and that should be on the Tupperware Valley Joint Powers Board website. We may have it on our town website, I'm not sure, but you know, we'll, well, they definitely is in the joint power report website so you can see what the progress is and where the, where the allowance. And these are, just to point out, these are the distribution lines, not the service lines. So if you have questions about where your service line is going to go, talk to, we'll talk to the engineers and we can discuss that because each one of those is going to be an individual application, I guess. And I guess the other one I would have under special, we have the, our Corona, COVID-19 update, we have, we've opened up the front lobby with restricted access right now for the town hall. Trying to maintain social distancing. The, by association municipalities has come out with an analysis or a look at the new, for the special session is going to be this summer about how the money is going to come to the towns. That's kind of up in the air right now. If you want to, I can let you read through it, but these are their observations on it from the WHAM office.
Is that on the website?
I, it probably is. I, I got mine from a, I can email you. Oh, I emailed this. They're, they proposed from the legislative service office, which proposed different legislation that might come up for the next special session and they haven't called that into, in yet, so we don't know. But I would hope they will do that. I bet you, if you want to get on the WHAM, you know, you get, I get these all the time, so.
I'll get on their email list.
Yeah. Any else? They did for the part, right?
No, we've been issued some additional PPP just to respond to incidents, but it's been quiet out there. I think they're excited and were called to a fall at Tongue River Resort and canceled with the latest.
I do have one other thing. When I'm thinking of it, I'm still working with VCM and theoretically Century Market will have our, our option here in September.
Okay.
So I did send an email back. So I did send an email back to Century, or to VCM, and said, go ahead. Move the service to the Far Hall, tell them water treatment plan to town shop, I haven't heard that from, okay, recently, I just did that on my computer last week, so. So maybe we'll get that. Vale, something? Uh, future agenda items?
Done.
Done? Um, approval of charter report?
So on the next one, I just made a move from the express bill pay after Kennedy's, which is not in the account yet, but I moved thirty thousand from express bill pay into the general fund account. So just to give you a heads up, that will be coming, and then you'll see a difference in those accounts.
And Sam, you got copies of these, you can see all this?
Yes, sir.
I can't, all I see is an S on the screen, so I can't tell if you're looking at them.
You're a funny guy.
I just have a lot of humor today.
Sorry, I missed it.
I would move to accept the treasurer's report as presented.
We move it in second by, by Jess, second by Jessica, to accept the treasurer's report, all in favor?
Aye.
In a budget review, I think Barbara gave it out, it's very preliminary at this point.
Yes.
Very preliminary.
There's still quite a few things I probably need to rearrange, especially after looking over, um, the utilities department. I think that there's some things in there that belong in one sense, and. I just have to go and make sure the allocations are correct. And then, of course, when it comes to dealing with the personnel part of it, that's very rough, that's a very rough estimate. Because we're going to have three people in our office for a while, because at the end of this year, for the end of it, we'll be transitioning a new person in. As Kathy goes out to retire. We have the change out in the engineering staff, so those numbers will change. We have, we have to decide based on the next couple of months if we add someone else to, um, the maintenance department or not. So just a lot of different factors, we don't know, not to mention, we have no clue how much money is going to come in. I mean, I already deducted a lot off of top, so we're trying to lower our expenses. And you'll notice, um, MDU, we started dividing those up where they actually belong. So for the last, however many years, the admin has been covering the majority of the MDU bills. Well, we actually went through and said, well, this belongs to parks, this belongs to maintenance, you know, and we put them in the places that they go. So that's not an admin expense, it actually is moved out, so those, that's why those numbers are going to look off in the trend. Um, we also realized that we were allocating funds for express bill take, pay and payment tech, we're coming out of admin. Well, those are water sewer and sanitation fees, so they go on billing fees, so I've taken all of those out and moved them there. So that shift caused, you know, more in admin and, or less being spent in admin and more being spent there. But that's where they belong, they're not admin, you know, funds, they have to come from where they are designated. So those are the ones that really stand out.
So we'll have a proposed meeting here soon.
Yeah, we'll have to do one in between, just to kind of really, kind of get stuff locked in as much as we can. And then we'll have to try to, um, you know, do our first reading on the next one. And we should be able to have, like, because we approved the budget by department now, so we'll be able to have that type of numbers. You know, the line for line thing, that's always the guess, and this year, I feel like it's going to be more of a guess.
All right, you got homework for next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I don't dig too much into this, because, I mean, I've moved more stuff in there, and I have to change those numbers that are actuals. I did change the actuals for the water sewer and sanitation, because I just pushed those over since I'd printed that, so I went in and changed that. So that is accurate on the revenue part of water sewer and garbage, and the expenses were accurate, but.
I was getting revisions between now and the next meeting, if you could email.
Yes, it's a daily changing thing.
Sure.
And I mean, I did payroll today, so that changes that.
Right.
So it's like to try to keep up with this, and it just, you have to set a point and be like, okay, this is where we are, this is how we potentially look.
So you want to have a, like, a workshop before the next meeting to look over what we have?
I will, maybe. I would, Mr. Mayor, it's just your best guess, because we know this is all so fluid, and I hate to have a, a workshop, and then all of a sudden, the next day, something comes down from on high, it just makes it awkwardly.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure.
And we do, and I can send you updates, and then also remember, you can all log in through your Castell online, and you can see the live budget. If you ever want to go and just look and see what something looks like, you have access to that. And if you don't remember your login password, let me know, and I'll get you back in. Should be your initials and your last.
I may have to do that.
So, yeah.
Not that it's judicious.
But it is there.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Barbara? Okay, um. Approved payroll. I'll make a motion to approve payroll of eleven thousand minus eight dollars and fifty cents. I move, Randy, and second by Jessica, approve of payroll, all in favor?
Aye.
Counts payable, and then see, there's, there's a large bank credit card statement in there, but nothing is. In the ice on, and it was.
And what computer did we upgrade again?
The mayor's?
No, that was the engineer.
Oh, that's right, engineer, you got the CAD capable.
Yeah, but a lot of it's just get, just get adequate, and old, rusty.
I move to approve bills in amount of fifty two thousand, six forty six and fourteen cents.
Moved by Jeff, second by Randy, approve the bills. More discussion, more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else? Randy, I'll make a motion to adjourn. I move by Randy to adjourn. All right, Sam?
Aye.
You got a second?
Second.
Aye, second.
Move the second by Sam. All in favor?
Aye.